Okay, we just call it just for roll call.
Dale, are you here? Are you here Dale?
Yes.
All right, Tony Corpi.
Here.
Bruce Raboin. Not here. Tina Sather.
Here.
Yes.
Roxanne Skogstad-Dietz.
Here.
Joanne Smith.
Okay, we gotcha.
Beth Schimone.
Here.
Joe Sullivan or Max Yusso.
Here.
Awesome. All right. Stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Move to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
I have a motion by Jessica and a second by Tina to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, and we'll go to open forum. Is Cecil just gonna come on when they're?
Yeah, they're gonna come on. So one of the things that's new is we'll have a sign up sheet in the back that will also have agendas. So if there's anybody here to speak this evening, feel free to come up. Otherwise, we'll continue to move forward. And Nick, we may be starting with you.
Ready?
Yeah.
So Nick is here from Kutaska. He is going to be doing a short presentation for us regarding their program and a possible partnership for the future with our district.
We're gonna skip the card play.
Mike, is there anything that we can do to help him?
Gonna make it hard on you, Mike. So I guess I could just start out while Mike's working on this. Oh, sure. So my name is Nick Adams. Education Director for Kutaska. I realize that I've been in my current position for almost two years and I've never come to meet with the International Falls School Board, so I apologize for that. The reason that I'm here today is because I've been hearing about some of the exciting things happening in International Falls and with your district and some of the things that your school's doing. I really just want to extend to you some of the things that Kutaska does, some of the things that Head Start does, and just look to build some more partnership and collaboration for the future. I don't have any asks. I'm not selling anything. Head Start has stood on its own two feet for 60 years. We will keep doing that. Thank you, Mike. So there's my info. And is this what people use? People like the podium?
There's a few barriers with sound online, so we're trying to figure that out. But go ahead.
All right, thank you. So again, there's me, there's how to contact me. I do oversee our Head Start. I think we got dying Mike now too.
Here, you can take this one. Sorry about that.
It's okay. So I oversee our Head Start program, which is four and five year olds and our early Head Start program, just birth to three. So when you think that, you can think me, and we've actually got a whole cheering section in the back here today as well. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about why Head Start matters. And a lot of this is gonna be really basic for folks who are involved in education. Again, just trying to talk about our program a little bit and introduce it so you kind of know where we're headed and what we're looking at. Talk a little bit about what we know and some science. Little bit about what we do and how we take action, and then big goals, outcomes we seek. So why Head Start matters? This program, as I mentioned, 60 years. We really try to wrap our arms around these families. There's some aspects of Head Start. The biggest thing obviously is kids first, and I love pictures and I love talking through things in pictures. Getting these kids ready for kindergarten. About a year and a month ago, we surveyed kindergarten teachers before they got into the witching hour that is now, this time of the school year. And we asked them, if there's one thing that you could tell us to have kids ready for when they get to your classroom next fall, what is that? And there's always some unique answers when you ask kindergarten teachers these things. But the one thing that was across the board is I can teach them how to hold the pencil, I can teach them to read, I can teach them the math. I can't teach them social emotional awareness with the rest of the kindergarten classroom. They need to come ready to be able to listen and to be able to use the bathroom and to be able to not poke kids. So that's, social emotional piece is always going to come up number one for Head Start. That's what we're really focused on. Also for parents. Why does this matter for parents? Parents can have a little bit of childcare. We offer full day services right now, four days a week. Teachers in the back, plug your ears, we might be looking at going back to five days a week. We'll see kind of how that goes and how things shake out in some conversations. But giving parents an opportunity to go back to school, to finish their degrees, or get to work instead of being at home with their children on those five days a week. So again, opening up those doors for families who are in poverty to now seek some more employment, to seek some more schooling, things of that nature. And we also know that kids who are part of an early childhood education program, whether that's Head Start, whether that's what school districts do, down in our neck of the woods, we have Early Edge also, much more likely to graduate. Right? So this is why it matters. Head Start is focused on the school readiness first. How can we get kids ready for kindergarten? Now, I've talked through a few of these things, I just want to highlight some numbers. We serve right around 200 families in Artasca and Kuchin County. Again, Head Start is a free program for any families who are within the income guidelines or kind of on that teetering edge of living in what the feds consider poverty. We do a lot of screenings and assessments, and that can be some mental health disabilities assessments, trying to get kids the learning plans that they need. And then when we talk about the community, like what's the community's return on all of this childcare? What's in it for them? Well, according to economists with a little bit bigger brains than I, about $7 to $10 return on every dollar spent on early childhood comes back to that community in the future. Now, those numbers are from 2019, so I recognize you could probably add a zero to each of those numbers with inflation and whatnot. Things are just a little bit spendier now. Little bit about what we know. We can have a ton of kids thriving and a ton of kids struggling all at once. It's all happening side by side. Much like with our funding, we can have a lot of different things happening with some of that as well. And I share this, this is all public, so there's no secrets here, but I just share this to give you kind of a peek at what we're working with. On the right hand side, we've got the dollars that we take in. Okay, about $2.5 million in federal Head Start funding and almost $4 million a year. We're actually closer to that 38 number for the upcoming year. And you can see here, if all we did is pay wages and fringe, much like a school district, we are spending out most of this. So there's not a lot left over for things like rent, licenses, subscriptions, you name it, everything else. So just sell the $4 million a year. We also know that these funds can be impacted by enrollment and attendance. So for instance, if we do not reach full enrollment each year, the feds can review that and say, you don't need all of this funding because you're not fully enrolled or you're not getting enough kids to school. So these are things that we have to balance. And just to highlight a couple of items here. Short term goals, when we taught children and families on this, three meals a day, right? They're getting education that they need and deserve, and families get the opportunities in the short term. Long term, and I'll submit these for the board, but children prepared for kindergarten and families have a foundation of resources. When we talk about some of the connections here in a moment, getting those kids and getting their parents into a school setting early so that they can start to learn the processes and they're getting a head start by the time that they reach kindergarten. They kind of know the drill. So what's this look like in practice? Really four areas. Education, I talked about the social emotional center, like we're always centered on here. This is number one for us. We use creative curriculum, conscious discipline, and as always, our Head Start program performance standards, that's what we have to follow as a Head Start program. All right, so these are kind of like our three pillars of our approach there. And for supports, I talked a little bit about our family advocates, how they're able to connect these families to what they need. They do goal setting, they do needs assessments with them. They'll help them navigate different Kutaska services that they might be eligible for. We have a lot of Head Start families who struggle paying their energy bills in the wintertime. So through our Energy Assistance Program at Kutaska, there's some options there for them. Then talking about that connection piece in the bottom right there, getting them into the learning environment, getting them into a flow, getting them into the process so that they're ready when they get to school. We also do a lot of parent trainings and we have some offerings there. I know Linda is in the audience and I'm sorry to call you out. She's really looking forward to getting some of the Family First events back up and running. So much of this connection piece kind of shriveled during COVID. We're really, really looking to get back into Family First events, in-person gatherings, bringing people together to build some of these connections. And then home visits as well. Conferences, home visits. Our teaching staff do a great job. They visit with families at the beginning of the year, then again at the end of the year. And if that student is transitioning into another one of our classrooms, they'll help them navigate that. Same thing with transitioning into kindergarten. And we talk about growth, really just getting parents and kids at a young age set up to be engaged. Right? We ask a lot of our Head Start parents and a lot of our Head Start kids so that they'll kind of get in the habits of being engaged early and often, so then that can carry through. And I think that coincides nicely with some of the things that you're trying to build here in this district or build back or grow. And then also opening up those opportunities for some growth and employment, as I touched on. So when you think good, better, best, if all we did was reach our Head Start performance standards, like that's what we're gonna do. It's the only thing we're gonna do. That's still good. There's a lot of good there. Better is, we live in a state such as Minnesota where they're like, we love what Head Start does, we love the results, we're gonna throw a little bit more Head Start money in that direction so that you can start to offer some unique solutions to address specific community needs. So for instance, in Grand Rapids, we had a unique community need. We saw in the needs assessment, infant toddler care was really in demand. With our state Head Start dollars, we were able to open up an early Head Start room there. And we do have an early Head Start room here in International Falls as well, so. And then when we think best, this is really why I'm here, working closely with local partners to really drill down to specific community needs. Right? School districts, health and mental health providers, city and county government. I think we've done a really fantastic job with our Head Start performance standards. We just had a federal review done. We crushed it. We're doing good work here. We're doing some cool things with our state dollars. I'm excited about how we're approaching that. I think this local piece, and especially here in International Falls, a strong relationship with the school, with the city, a little bit more with the county certainly. I want to build on that and see where we can go from here. Given you a peek at, you know, some of our funding sources, there are some things that we can do and some things that we can grow there, but it's gonna take some communication and some teamwork and you knowing, hey, we're here and we're excited to be here. We want to be closer than ever before. And I think with some of that mentality and remembering this is the reason that we're all here in the first place, right? It's for the kids, it's for the families. I think starting with that mindset, we can really start to grow and build on the good things that are already happening, but kind of taking them to that next level. And I think that, from what I gather from Beth, that's kind of the mentality moving forward is how do we level up a little bit? So yeah, on that, any questions or things that I might have missed? Please.
I would like to say that I'm on the Kutaska Board as well, and I've also been, as an early childhood special ed teacher for almost 30 years, I would consult with the Head Start program in the Falls, and I believe that early childhood still consults with them, right? It works collaboratively with them. And I think there have been times in the past that people were concerned about numbers of students. There was like a competition, like, ooh, if, you know, we really need as many preschoolers as we can get. Both programs needed it. There was a little concern about the curriculum, I think, but I think now is a perfect time to say, let's get rid of all that concern, let's work together, and I think things could be a lot better. I'm sure that there's not, I don't want to say that there's a problem, I'm just saying I know there was always that underlying feeling like people were fearful, you know, we've got a program, you've got a program, what are we gonna do here? So I am happy that you came, and I think it'd be great if we can work closer together.
Yeah, I appreciate that a lot. And I really like what you're saying about, I think it's really, really easy to sit in a room of people and come up with a billion ways that something can't work. It's a really easy thing to do. The question is, can you get into a room with some leadership and some focus on, we don't really care about the million ways that can't work, we need to find one that does. And that's my hope, certainly. Thank you.
I don't know if I can go next. Yeah, sorry. I can use this one too. I just have a question on, first of all, you did say you were gonna share the PowerPoint with the board as well? Okay, just because there was some great information in there. You mentioned something called Early Edge, like is that like EDGE or is that like, what is that?
Yeah, it's a play on education. It's part of what was formerly known as the Invest Early Project, if you're familiar with that. That was a Blandon Foundation funded initiative where we blended Head Start and school district classrooms and services into one cohesive program. And that went on for about 20 years. And it did some incredible things, like you can Google it, there's some pretty compelling scientific papers written about that model.
Perfect.
So check it out. And with some of the funding streams changing over the past five or six years, that model is getting harder to emulate, which is one of the reasons why Early Edge was born and Invest Early kind of went away. There's some structures in place right now that almost require you to be a little bit siloed in some ways, and there are workarounds too, if you're willing to work around.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks.
Was there a reason that that stopped?
Yeah, the funding.
Okay.
Yep. Funding shifted.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I guess I have a question. So other than income based, is there a difference, maybe slightly different curriculum for Head Start versus preschool, or what's the difference between the two I guess?
Yes, so the Head Start performance standards require us to do certain things and take certain approaches. For instance, I mentioned our family advocates. A school district, if they were to run preschool, would not be required to have these family advocates doing things like needs assessments. But the school district would have other requirements that maybe Head Start doesn't, and it just, there's a lot to it, and I know that that's an ultra lazy answer. And curriculums tend to be different. For instance, we use creative curriculum. A school district probably wouldn't be using creative curriculum. If they were, they'd probably be using parts of it and then parts of another one right now, but I don't want to speak for what Falls might do right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for so many times.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks.
Yeah. Is Cecil on or?
Yeah, they are.
Okay.
Their presentation is interesting.
Hi Jason, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you Beth.
Uh, you are up.
Yes, guys.
Excellent, well, good evening, School Board. Thank you for having me. I'm gonna pull up the presentation here. All right, well, let's get started. Good evening. Again, thank you for having me. It's nice to be here this evening to present the revised budget for the current year. The process we walked through to go ahead and update the budget, we looked at a number of current year considerations, which included enrollment. So we take a look at our current year enrollment compared to what our budget numbers would look like at the beginning of the year. We look at state and federal funding and any adjustments that came through. We're looking at staffing, so if there have been any contract settlements, any staff placements, so either new staff or presentations. And then we look at employee benefits, so benefit selections that employees make during their open enrollment period. We also take a look at a detailed, a look into the account activities, so every, all current activity that's been happening this year, any deferred maintenance item in particular. We know there's been a number of those as we consider how the referendum and our long group of slave maintenance dollars play into these deferred maintenance items. And then we're also considering prior year results, so looking at our financial audit as we ended last fiscal year, and then any of that actual expense data completed for last year as we start to project for this year. So we have some good news for revised budget. So on this table, we're comparing our current year adopted budget, which is our revised budget. In the general fund specifically, our adopted budget, we had anticipated about 13.6 million revenue we're bringing in. It looks like about 14.5 million, so we have a budgeted $850,000 change or improvement. On the expenditure side, we had anticipated 14.6 million. We're gonna be closer to 14.9 million, or about 250,000 higher than we expected. But when we put together the adopted budget, and actually this was done on your previous finance plan, they had anticipated above a million dollar reduction in fund balance. And it looks like we're gonna be about a $400,000 reduction for this year. Almost a $600,000 improvement in fund balance, which is great compared to what we had projected, but we still have a decline in fund balance. And so we're still finding to spend more money than we're bringing in for the current year. So what makes up those changes? When we look at general fund revenue adjustments in particular, we see state general education aid is increasing by about $157,000. That's due to our budgeted enrollment versus our actual enrollment coming in. We were pretty conservative in anticipating what that enrollment would look like. We're also seeing about $120,000 increase in property taxes, the tax levy that the district approved, that the board approved back in December, and these are the actual property taxes coming in. Other state revenue sources are up about $440,000. Most of this is due to an anticipated solar grant or credits that we expect to receive. Now, that's based on us installing that solar array, and we know that project's behind schedule, so this may roll into next year, but there's an offset on expenses as that will hit the same fiscal year. And then our local revenue, which includes fees, donations, interest income, and some other miscellaneous items, is going up by $120,000, and the majority of that is interest income driven. And so the original budget anticipated about just $5,000 in interest income, and we're actually gonna realize about $95,000 of revenue this year, so that's a great increase on interest. And then no changes to our federal sources for revenue. Those total adjustments equal about $850,000 on revenue. From the general fund expenditures side, we see some small increases in salaries and wages of above $58,000. Employee benefits are up about $100,000, and again, employees have the choice, the very open enrollment each year, to choose their benefit packages through medical insurance and tax shelter annuities and so forth. And so we're seeing an increase in those kinds of lines. Our purchase services are up about $200,000. The majority of that is actually due to utilities, in particular our electricity usage. This is one where the previous finance team had budgeted a lower number for electricity than we would have anticipated. So over the last three years, we've spent about $550,000 a year on electricity. The budget for this year was only $475,000. And so I think the budget was just off coming into this year, so we're up about $100,000 on our electricity budget. We'll correct that as we move forward as well in the next year's budget and make sure we have the right numbers in there. Repairs and maintenance are also included in this line. We see some additional expenses in that category along with professional services, things like our financial audit, legal fees, and then even our Cecil finance contract that wasn't fully budgeted for at the beginning of the year. And so a combination of those calls about $200,000 for the increase in purchase purposes. Superintendent is doing a wonderful job trying to control expenses, and we see that in the supplies and equipment line where our budget's coming down by $94,000. Also our other expenditures, $20,000, those are dues and memberships that we're foregoing this year, and sort of seeing some savings in the current year. And then just through our federal programs, we're seeing about a $2,000 increase from our budgeted expense in that area. Total adjustments are about $250,000. I think that's a very reasonable number, especially as we see the increase on the revenue side. We also look at all funds when we do the revised budget, not just general fund. And so you see the first line with the general fund that I just walked through. In food service, from a revenue side, we had anticipated $730,000 of revenue. We're actually about $745,000, so up about 14 from our budget. Community service was $707,000. We're anticipating about $735, so we're up about $28,000. We did have the referendum pass, so thank you to the community for the referendum passage in the fall. We're now realizing that revenue within our budget along with some interest income as we continue to invest. as we continue to invest those dollars while we wait to be able to spend the majority of those on projects. And so we're anticipating about $1.0 million in revenue. Our debt fund is holding steady along with our student activity fund. And so in total, our revenue for all funds is above $38.4 million, up about $22.6 or $22.7 million on adopted budget, again largely due to the passage of the referendum. For all expenditure side, again, general fund, we're seeing an increase of about $255,000. Food service, we have no changes that we're proposing, so that stays at $744,000. Community service, we do have an increase of about $27,000, just over $730,000 total budget for community service. Construction, we're anticipating spending about $200 million in this current fiscal year. I guess that coming over the next two years as we do those little projects. The debt redemption fund has a small increase of $950 for a fee that wasn't originally budgeted or because student activities remains the same at all. So in total, we have an expense budget above $19.1 million, which is up above $2.4 million. And again, most of that's due to the construction on this one. Fund balance is really what we all probably watched the closest. So we pulled in where our audited fund balances ended at the end of last fiscal year, June 30th, 2024. And then build in these revised revenues and expenses to get to the almost projected $630 of '25. And then what we're aiming for a change. And so the general fund, we're seeing an improvement of about $400,000 from that original adopted budget. We also see an improvement in community service of $2,500. We're realizing those construction revenues coming in left the expense of the fund balance at about $19.7 million. The debt redemption fund has seen a slight improvement as well of $14,000. A change in student activities, vertical improvement of about $19.3 million in most of student construction. That's what I have for you tonight on revised budget. Our next steps are we will incorporate these numbers into the adopted budget, which comes through the board at next month's meeting. And we'll walk through that in probably a little bit more detail than we are here tonight so you have a good picture of what happened, if this may happen for next fiscal year. I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Thank you, Jason. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
All right, leave anybody else for open forum? All right, move on to committee and administrative reports. Joe?
Last month of school, right? Anyways, to start out, student council applications, they're now closed. And new members have been chosen. Next year's members have yet to be announced. But we are excited to welcome our new advisor for next year, Ashley Hall. Spring sports week took place the week of April 28th to May 2nd. Dress-up days include pajama day, neon day, Hawaiian day, USA day, and, you know, classic Bronco day. Students competed in a rock-paper-scissors contest throughout the week, earning Bronco beads along the way. The pep fest took place that Wednesday, and students were recognized for spring activities as well as those who received their academic excellence awards. K-PoD hosted their Dare Graduation for sixth graders. Dare classes taught by Officer Shane Traumer focused on helping students learn the process for making good decisions while managing stress, such as peer pressure. K-PoD also hosted the bike safety rodeo at Harry Park with coaching services and police. As the name indicates, K-PoD members elaborate kids on bike safety. More than 100 mil, more than 100 people showed up. Grades 6 through 12, 6 through 12, had their spring band concert on Wednesday, May 14th. The theme was rock and roll, and overall, the concert was a huge success. It received, it received great responses from the community. And a reminder to all that yearbooks are available for pickup in the concession booth during lunch. The last day for students grades 6 through 11 is Thursday, May 29th. Seniors get out early. The teachers have a lot of fun and exciting activities for the day to send off the kids for summer. The activities include a day of fishing at Voyager's, a softball tournament for grades 9 through 12, as well as a kickball tournament for grades 6 through 8, open swimming, bingo with prizes donated by the community, board games, outdoor yard games, succulent planting, dunk tank, karaoke, and much more. The day is completely filled with events. The FHS Student Council wishes everyone a wonderful summer. That's it.
Thank you. Missy?
Okay, our May enrollment is at 4:38. That is up 2 from last month. We did have a couple of students move, but we also had a couple of students come into the district, so that was nice. I have a lot of things to announce because May is a busy month in an elementary school, as you can imagine. We just had Steve Night on May 7th, and that was a success. Our theme was an Earth Day theme, "Love Your Earth." And we had lots of kids and families attend, so that was really fun to watch. And the park came and they brought a solar telescope, so that was pretty cool. The kids really liked that. They had some of their robots that they had programmed that the kids got to operate, different recycling activities and crafts, all sorts of fun, fun things. So that's always a good time. Our fifth graders just went to Starbase last week. And this year, they just went for three days down to Duluth, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. It used to be four days, but earlier in the year, Starbase was able to come up for, to do two days just to try to get more kids to go because it's hard sometimes. It's four days normally, so that's three nights. Next year, they won't be able to do that, which is a little bit unfortunate. But anyways, they did just go to Starbase and they came back. And I had great reports from both teachers and our secretary attended as well as one of our school staff there. She said all the kids were really well behaved. And Starbase gave us a little extra compliment that they had a really good week and the kids were really well behaved. So that's always good to hear, especially when we're out in another community representing our school. So kudos to our fifth grade teachers that went to Starbase and our parent chaplains and our other school staff that went to Chappelle. We need those people, otherwise we aren't able to do those events. And it's really, it's really fun and really important. I went twice. It's a good experience. We, this week, we are doing our Bronco Pride carnival. Today kindergarten and first grade went this morning. And grades 2 and 3 went this afternoon. Tomorrow, we will have preschool in the morning, and then we will have grades 4 and 5 in the afternoon. On Wednesday, we have our service learning day. And so fifth grade will be out cleaning at the cemetery. Fourth grade will clean over at Bronco Stadium. Third grade painted rocks, and they will be placing them around the community in different areas. And the rocks have positive messages on them, and some of them just look really pretty. Second grade will be helping at the library again. First grade is creating cards for the care center residents. Kindergarten will be doing playground cleanup. And then preschool is making signs for community helpers again, and then they'll deliver those. We also have relay recess going on this week, so we have a really jam-packed week. And that started this morning. We have penny wars this week. We have hats for a dollar. Thursday morning will be our actual relay recess ceremony. And we'll have one of our students speaking at relay recess. And that will start at 9 o'clock. And then we also will have pie in the face for sale for $2 during the relay recess event on Thursday. And of course, all of that money gets donated to the American Cancer Society. We have track and field on Friday afternoon for grades 4 through 6. And our preschool is also going to the farm that day in Cook. And then Friday will be the last day for penny wars. Next week, we have preschool and kindergarten graduations. And we surveyed families, and the majority of families wanted to go back to an in-person graduation, so we're doing that. So that will be at 9:30 for preschool on Thursday, and kindergarten graduation is at 1. And Green Tech is sponsoring all of the refreshments for both kindergarten and preschool graduation this year. So we'd like to thank Green Tech for that generous donation. I also, I forgot to note that PCA and Kyra Hasgarden from Hasgarden Customs have sponsored our T-shirts for relay recess, so we just got those delivered today and getting them ready to go to classrooms, so we thank them for that donation. Let's see. Fifth grade outdoor education day is also on Wednesday, May 28th. And we need to thank Border Chevrolet. They have sponsored the meals from Super 1 for our volunteers. So that's really nice because we like to give them a nice meal when they come out and volunteer their time for the day for our fifth graders. And the fifth graders really enjoy that day. They do that out at the Royal International Park headquarters now. And then the last day of school is of course the 29th. And our kindergarten through fifth grade students will be going to the movies that day. And PCA has sponsored the snacks for our kids. And then we've asked our students to bring $3 for admission. So that will be happening on our last school day. We just finished our Fastbridge screening for spring. So I will bring that data to our June meeting to share with you. And then Lisa and I and a team of teachers were lucky enough to get to attend a week-long training in Portland, actually. And we got to see Dr. Anita Archer. We were at her explicit instruction academy. And if you know Dr. Anita Archer, she's absolutely amazing. I kind of have a star, like she's like, I have a professional crush on her. Absolutely amazing. She is 78 years old, and she's a Spitfire. And she's been around for a long time, and she's seen a lot of things. But what we talked about, that training was all about explicit instruction. And it was a train-the-trainer model. So the, we went with Alex Manassmoent, a high school math teacher, Michelle McDonald, a high school special ed teacher, and Marson Nemec, third grade teacher, and Jenny Taylor, an elementary special ed teacher. So it was really nice to have a mix of staff represented at the training. And throughout the training, we really obviously validated a lot of the things that we've been doing at Falls Elementary School. So that felt really good, and it helped like Marson and Jenny and I for sure. Like we had a lot of background knowledge, so it was really nice to hear those things. And we picked up some new things, and we just kept talking the whole time because they really talked about how this is applicable throughout the entire district, like all ages, right? So the training was really about high-impact strategies, low prep, that really are evidence-based and research-based. And they really increased the teaching and learning. The strategies emphasize clarity, active engagement, and purposeful practice. The academy highlighted the importance of modeling and guided practice, was scaffold to increase student learning. The strategies are not only utilized, have improvement to increase student achievement, but it also helps to create equity in our classrooms. Because a lot of time, some of the strategies that we're using inadvertently are not creating equity in our classrooms. So we learned a great deal, had a lot of interesting conversations among ourselves. And we were able to network with other school districts, which was also really important because we were able to see what other places we're doing. Like, and Dr. Archer put us at different tables, like all the principals ate together. And so we could hear what schools are doing all over. So that was really powerful for Lisa and I for sure to talk to those groups and bring some of those strategies back. And we had a lot of eventful traveling. It was like my first real experience with planes. By the end of the week, we ended up on six planes. So I like was broken in really, really well. But I was like traveling with people who knew how to do it, and Tim told me that they would take care of me. And I also, I suppose they're actually probably pros at traveling. So it was an interesting adventure on our way home, but it was a great time. And I feel really blessed that we got to do that. And we got to go to Dr. Archer's house for, she had us all, like everybody from the training at her house. She had a beautiful garden, and she was just a wonderful lady.
An experience, totally.
It was a great, great experience. So we're excited to bring that back to the district, and we'll introduce that through many PDs throughout the school year next year.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was a lot. I know. Lisa's like, oh, you have a question? I'm so sorry.
Just one. I forgot. Is Starbase's science activities all, that's the whole thing?
Yeah, it's science and STEM careers. And the purpose initially when they did it was really to expose kids to careers that are available to them outside of high school in the STEM field, especially underserved populations. They wanted to expose. Any other questions? Well, if you have time, look up Dr. Anita Archer. She is truly amazing.
Okay, thank you. And I will just add to what Missy had to say about the, the training. And I think what has us so excited is that it's the perfect opportunity to collaborate across the district. We will be able to work together on our goals. We're already bubbling about it, even though we're finishing up this school year. We're excited about next school year because we'll collaborate and do some incredible professional development for everyone. So I want to share that throughout the school year, Falls High School teachers have been intentional and dedicated in their use of high-impact, evidence-based instructional strategies. And their efforts have truly paid off. As measured by our Fastbridge scores, the percentage of students meeting the reading goal increased from last year, at the end of last year, they were 56.73%. This year, they increased to 65.73%, which is an impressive 9%, improvement.
That's great.
Students also showed growth in math with an increase of, from 55.56% last year to 60.56% with marking an overall 5% gain. So I'm very proud of their hard work and dedication. We have graduation planning underway in addition to all the fun activities that Joseph mentioned in his speech. We're very excited as we approach graduation. We have a few important updates. The seniors all voted. They voted for their photographer. They chose Capture Your Moment. Class speakers have been chosen. We have Brenna Crosby, Brendan Scholler, and Lola Wade giving speeches. They also voted on their faculty speaker, who will be Katie Hammers. We have special events planned for our seniors on Tuesday, May 27th. At 3:00 AM, we have senior breakfast sponsored by the Elks. And I saw Crazy Thompson today, and he's very excited. He has a lot of volunteers who are alumni, and they are looking forward to celebrating the seniors that day. Following the breakfast, as tradition, traditionally we have done, we will have graduation practice in the gym. We will also have our senior photo taken in the gym. The students will wear their graduation attire for that. And then we have the pep band joining us. And we are going to do walkthroughs at Falls Elementary School, followed by Falls High School. So we're really looking forward to that. And graduation ceremony will take place Sunday, June 1st, in the Falls High School gym. So, and I think that's about all I have. Our enrollment is at 505. We are at minus 1 due to a student moving out of the area. Any questions?
Thank you.
Tim?
I just want to address two topics or two legit items that are on the agenda for this evening. First of all, First of all, a windscreen at the football field. Purple Pride has been interested in pursuing, purchasing a windscreen for the, to be the south and west ends of the football stadium along the fence. At the meeting the other day, there were some concerns about the blocking of the view for handicapped individuals who like to watch the game from that end of the field. And those kinds of things, obviously, there's a certain contingent of people down on that end of the field with their trucks and other stuff going on. And some people enjoy that, and some people don't enjoy the light shining onto the football field, which causes delays in the games. So my request of you tonight is to try to make a decision on whether we should move forward with that project or not. Eventually, yea or nay on that project is going to come back to you people to answer to the folks that are happy with that and also not so happy with that. So any questions on that? The windscreen would stretch all the way from where the women's bathroom starts there along the fence, where the burgers are made in the concession stand, go all the way to the corner, and then all the way across the end of the field over to that gate, single gate that's person-y, just about all the way over to there. So, just so you have an idea of where it will be located.
Are you able to see through it at all?
You would not be able to watch the game through it very well, I would say. Obviously, it would dress up the stadium quite a bit. It would be very purple, would have stampede on there, Bronco Football, and some other stuff on there. It would be nice, so with the renovations that are going on there at the stadium. Ted also added to this project. I think that's kind of what the idea was when this was brought up. But again, also, the, the lights shining through the people who park on that end, and then when it's chilly, stay in their cars, leave their vehicles running, and the lights are on, shining onto the field. And that has caused problems throughout the years, where they have to go down and try to get hold of that person to try to shut the lights off, so. Ken?
I was wondering if you could get us a more detailed list of pros and cons before we have to vote. Are we, are we voting tonight on that, to an?
Yeah.
Oh, nuts. That doesn't...
Yeah, like I said, I think, I think most of them, like I said, the, the pros, obviously, I think are, are the lights, I think the lights, if people had their lights on, that would definitely take care of the possibility of them affecting the game. But people wouldn't probably be sitting down there able to watch the games. So I think it would, in my opinion, would dress up the place, right? Make it, give it that purple, give it a little, little jazz, and you look at it down there towards the scoreboard. But obviously, there would be a contingent of people who would be upset, because they have sat down there at that end of the field and watched the game from that end of the field, and they would probably no longer be able to do so.
Is there a way that you could make, like, a VIP or a handicap section?
Yeah, it was discussed at, at one point along the way, that maybe those people that have difficulties getting into the stadium, up the ramp, and really not have a place to sit in the stands, that we could possibly, there's that gate down there where the lawnmower comes through, would be to the north of the scoreboard, and that we can make an area there for those people to sit. Cold weather, again, obviously, would be a concern if they wanted to sit outside, but there would be that possibility, that we could do that, somebody could man that gate to let them in and out throughout the game.
And it would promote people paying to get in, as I was...
That's what I was thinking, too.
Well, that is one, one concern with the people who do sit on that end, that they're not paying to get in to watch the football games, so.
It's a lot of teenagers.
We can sell VIP tickets.
Any other questions on the windscreen? Again, I appreciate, I know it's kind of the last minute, but it came up at the Purple Pride meeting last Thursday morning about purchasing that, and they said that they would be pushing this off, the purchasing of it until the fall. So I guess it does give you a little time to think about it if you need to, but there is those options, if it's going to go on in '25 or '26.
Can I just ask one question? Is that okay? Sorry, I'm fighting allergies today, so I can't really speak. But with that area that people park, that is the Bronco Stadium, like, space, right? I just, I'm wondering, like, beyond that, who owns that? Like, I wish there could be some sort of, like, parking spaces. It's so hard back there, because it gets so muddy and messy and...
Yeah, I, you know, I would say on the street side, on the football side of the street, I would say that's school district property. On the other side, I'm not sure who owns that.
Okay. Just a thought.
The other item that I wish to speak to is Mighty Mustangs Wrestling. Mighty Mustangs Wrestling's been around for, I don't know, you guys want to take a guess?
Obviously, a predate myself here.
10, 12 years, I suppose, and maybe in that vicinity. And I don't think it's important how long it's been around, but the Airy Man has been a part of it for a long time, and he's leaving town. And so they're looking for the school district, the rec department, community ed to take over, at least administering the program, running the funds through, through them, and then having myself and whoever the community ed director is to help run that. I've talked with these gentlemen, and we've talked about the fact that if we're going to do something like this, we'd have to do something along the same lines as summer ball, where I'm kind of, as rec director, activities director, community ed, we're all involved in getting this, Beth Ansetitski and myself getting summer ball off the drum. But we also have a committee, a member, a group of people who take on responsibilities to help run the league, because with 375-plus kids, it's been insane when it's gotten off the drum the first couple of weeks, and couldn't be doing it without the people who are on the board and helping to do that. We've talked about that. They would have to do something similar, because it just would not be possible for me to be there on a daily basis to run that, just similar to rec basketball, to rec volleyball. It's just not something I can get out there every day to do, to be in charge of it. So there's got to be a group of people who grab it by the horns, and I think they have been willing to do that. We discussed the fact, Beth and I discussed the fact that if this is going to happen, that it's going to have to fund itself with, either with fees or whatever, they'd have to cover the cost. Wrestling would continue to occur at back, because that's where it's been, down in the basement, and they've rented that space for a few years. And so the costs for that and other things would have to be covered by their fees, so that it could continue to run. So really, what we're asking you this evening is to make the decision, is the school district going to take this on through community ed, through rec sports, to keep this program going? They also, I think, if we talked about this correctly, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, they'd like to change the name from Mighty Mustangs to Bronco Wrestling, or something along that line, instead of it being Mighty Mustangs, making it Bronco Wrestling, just to kind of associate it that it's involved with the school, that it's part of the school. They would like to continue to be able to bring people, kids in from Canada, little forkers surrounding areas, to continue to be part of this program, even though it's run by the school district, or be run through community ed, so. Questions?
I am confused, would it be rec department, or would it be community ed? Or is it not decided?
Well, I think, in my mind, rec and community are kind of in the same vicinity, same ballpark, same department. A lot of ours, stuff that happens with rec sports are really run through community ed. So it's kind of directed by me, but with, again, help from Beth Ansetitski to make sure that everything gets done.
Okay. And the only other thing I wanted to add was that I had an opportunity to see how that wrestling program is run early on, and I was overjoyed with the number of kids that are in there. I think it's a really wonderful program.
Yeah, I know. They shared with me that the start of the year was the mid-40s, it ends up, you know, in the low, lower 30s, I think they said, towards the end of the year, just because some kids come out, give it a try, and find out that it's not for them. So that's perfectly fine, that's what happens in a lot of sports, they come out, and they try it for a couple of weeks, and, yeah, maybe it's, it's not for them, so. Any other questions?
I think this also, like, coincides with how we do the Bronco Bass fishing, which isn't, like, actually school affiliated, as well as the trap team, so it just kind of makes sense to add them together.
And I think, I think Tina's going to talk a little bit about some of the conversations we had tonight in her activities report, but just to piggyback on what Mr. Ringhopper has to say with his two areas, I, I am in full support of this, as long as we can sustain the programming through their financial investment, like the trap club and some of the bass fishing, some of those other activities. I think anything that we can do to support our children in this community, we should be doing, and they have a robust adult team that's willing to invest in these kids. So I, I would like to see the school board get behind this.
Awesome.
Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Ben?
Oh. I knew I thought this was going to be a short meeting. I will try and skim through my information quickly tonight. I just wanted to let you know that we are currently getting, we tend to start preparing for the school year months in advance. We are really preparing what we're looking at in the realm of how we're operating for policy procedures and practices within the school district. The administrative team and I are having great conversations about what these operational practices and frameworks will look like within the district for beginning in '25, '26, in addition to working with the school board and some of the committees on how we can change some of the practices, past practices, and making them more efficient and effective for our district. Areas that we're currently going to be continuing work on throughout the summer include our attendance practices, behavior and discipline models, our daily operations, from what does pickup and dismissal look like, in addition to how is this going to look when we start doing actual construction, because we're going to have to intermittent changes in what some of these practices are going to look like, and to make sure that everybody's safe. We are also talking about our athletics and activities framework, tightening up some of the policies and procedures, and how we evaluate, to how we work with our coaches and our staff, our families and our students. We are talking about operations of communication, how we're communicating, and what that looks like with our community, how it looks like in our advertising, our print, from social media to all calls, and really tightening up and being consistent with some of our practices and how we communicate with our school community. We are also doing a deep dive. I spent a significant amount of time doing a deep dive into some of our budget, budgeting, in addition to our facilities, as you know, as a school board. One of the areas that I do have continued concerns around is our facilities and some of the non-compliant areas that we have been running into over the last few years. I want to really commend our facilities team for stepping up and working with me on making sure that we are compliant as we move forward. And this has taken a considerable amount of time and efforts on behalf of the team, and we've had four leads that have stepped up this year to assist me with that. That is Jen Thompson, Corey Smith, Jeremy Anderson, and Mark Thorpe. And I've really appreciated the investment they've had to get 361 compliant and the many rounds that we've been targeted. Also, we, we also have a big undertaking happening regarding our student information system, and that is our CIST. We are transitioning from Skyward to Infinite Campus, which is a little bit more efficient and current day. I think our staff's going to be very pleased with what they're going to be working with in the future. But with that comes site experts, and I just want to recognize Mike Blyce and Casey. They have been working tirelessly, and they have put up with my rapid changes and my asks. And I know that this undertaking has been in addition to the work that they already do day in and day out. But I think, at the end of the day, when we complete this project, and this conversion project, we're going to see some systems of change that are going to highly impact some of the longevity of what takes time within our district and make it more efficient. So we're pretty excited about that. But again, I just want to extend my thanks, Mike and Casey. As we get ready to go back into our summer break, to actually begin our summer break, and get ready to go back into our new school year, I want to just let you know that one of the changes that I have made is we are going to be discontinuing our massive bulk mailing that we do in the fall. The cost to that is thousands and thousands of dollars, and some of our homes are getting three to five of the same package. And so one of the things we want to do is to update our practices and really start targeting our 21st century practices, where we're really looking at digital frameworks, what is it that has to be in the hands of our families, what is it that they truly need, and what is it that they can attain within their school, back-to-school visit, their classrooms, and what can be pushed out from their teachers. So Lisa, Missy, and I are going to be working more on that with our American League advocate and our community ed director on prioritizing what that is going to look like. As we know, with some of the changes that came with me as your new superintendent, the calendar does get printed, the calendar should be printed by now, and we learned that once we printed that calendar and pushed it out, it was outdated. So the calendars are actually going to be released on our back-to-school night, so they're more up to date, more accurate for our families. So I'd like to let you know that one of the things I'm very excited about is when we come back to school, our staff comes back to school the last week of August. We will be having our open house night that Wednesday evening, which is a traditional practice for the district. But one of the things that we're going to be doing different this year is we're going to focus on the goals that we have as a school district about integrating and really making this a community school. So we're going to be moving to a back-to-school open house night that's going to be called Unity in Our School Community. And so what's going to happen is we will be not only having staff in the building and welcoming staff into our classrooms, meet the teacher, tour our schools, we're going to be opening up our school to community partners. So for example, we will be inviting local businesses, local booster clubs, people will be giving away prizes, and we'll have freebies at our tables. We'll have community resources, so for example, mental health practitioners, if people want to sign up, we'll have our free and reduced lunch forms, and we're going to have opportunities for our community members to come into our school and network with our families and vice versa. So I feel very excited about that as we move to a community school model. Next, one of the things that we're going to have to make a decision about as we move into June is we're going to have to make a decision about if we're going to move to, I'm not going to make a recommendation to move to a facilities director, but I'm looking at either continuing our facilities leads or moving to a facilities manager. The facilities time has, though I've been grateful to have the time to really do a deep dive and look at some of the needs of the district, it has taken up a considerable amount of time. But now we are building, Ashley Hall and I, my assistant, are building a hub, an Excel hub, where we have, we will have created checklists, we'll have created compliance frameworks, and what's going to happen is I will be able to monitor that more closely to ensure that things are getting done that need to be done within the school district. Next, you saw the Head Start proposal tonight. Nick and I will be getting together to talk about a possible proposal from Head Start to become partners within our school district. Right now, they are looking at renting two spaces in our early education wing. I feel the conversation was well-received by both of us. And I also want to thank Principal Tate. She was also instrumental in bringing this conversation to the table. I know she's been, this has been a passion area for her, and as we talk about the development of our youngest learners, we want those kids to be in our school, we want them to, that first touch of their academic experience, we want them to have positively with ISD 361, and when we have that wing with our preschool department, I know, I can't think of a better partnership. As a building principal who led Head Start Pre-K 6 building, that partnership is instrumental in building that community within your school district. So I look forward to further conversation around that. As you know, we have the revised budget, which had some positive highlights tonight. We do also still have some areas to continue to work on. And one of that is for me to really invest in where our dollars are going. When we talk about our supply budgets, purchases that are happening, as we know, there's an electricity flag. Some of that information is coming to the forefront as we start looking about through trends, what has really escalated in costs. And I've been able to do an analysis of where we really need to revisit, and/or if there is an infrastructure that needs to be re-looked at. So when we talk about, when we talked about that water bill that we saw for months, we noticed that there was a problem in the infrastructure that had to be addressed, which ultimately created a benefit to significantly decrease our water bills. So know that we are looking at each and every one of those that are coming through, so we can start establishing where we can make some significant cuts, because there is some spending that we do need to revisit, but there's also some really great benefits, and we want that money to go directly to kids.
The solar program is going to help with that electricity?
Yes, it will. Yeah, and it'll take us some time to build up. That ultimately will definitely highly impact. You also received a letter from the International Falls Figure Skating Club requesting the school board revisit our school calendar in regard to our spring break that the board approved, I believe, a couple of months ago. I am going to be making the recommendation to the board that we not... I am going to be making the recommendation to the board that we not revisit that, and I want to recognize the figure skating club's concern about, you know, people not being able to be at all practices due to families wanting to travel during that time. But I also want to recognize that when we start preparing our calendar, we are looking at probably about eight to one year in advance, and if we move to a change now, there is a significant ripple effect. The other piece that I want to recognize is that the calendar is, when we start looking at a spring break, I believe as a school district leader, that we have to look at it in alignment with our assessments. And our MCA's begin the last week of March, and they go through May. And I do not support breaking that up with a spring break in the middle of it, because that consistency matters for our kids, and that consistency matters for our teachers. It also means, based on the research that we do as a regional superintendent group, we're all pretty much in alignment, a week or two might be on or off, we try to stick together, because the other piece of when we select that spring break is when we transition from a winter to a spring sport. So it also leaves room for those kiddos at that time. So I know the school board did receive that letter, and I do want to apologize to the figure skating club, and I recognize their concern, but I cannot support that change. Next, referendum update, we are getting ready to go to release for bids, which will be the very first part of June, and I can tell you, though it's been tough to have competitive bids over the last few months, we are looking like we're gonna be in pretty good shape now that summer's coming to an end. We have more people that have inquired, Nexus has talked to many people, we have people that did not bid in the last round who are going to be bidding, so I'm feeling very hopeful and good about where we're going. We do know that we are gonna start in August, really looking at possibly sooner, the asbestos removal, because the school will be closed, in addition to looking at what we need to do for the floor, pull up some of the floor and sprinkler systems, so those are on the docket right now. Added to the board agenda tonight, I was able to finalize the MOU today, is the REED Act Teacher Training Compensation Aid that was delivered to us by the state, it's a one-time funding. You know that Principal Tate and Falls Elementary has spearheaded leading this amazing work, and we have until June 30th of 2025 to spend this money, and there's two different pools of money, one is for training, the other is for teacher compensation for going above and beyond their school hours, their workday, to compensate them for their time that they put into their REED Act training. Hours included anywhere from 55 additional hours to 110 hours, so it's a significant amount of time, so that has been added to your agenda this evening. Last but not least, I just want to close out with, we have eight days left of school, and I just really want to read a message to the staff of ISD 361, because we have our last eight days together. And I just really want to recognize, as we wrap up the school year, I just want to take a moment to recognize and thank everyone for your unwavering dedication, flexibility, and hard work. Whether you're leading our schools or teaching in a classroom, driving buses, preparing meals, supervising athletics or activities, or working behind the scenes, or up in our community or more, each of you played an essential role in supporting our students, families, and one another. I want you to know that your efforts, skills, knowledge, and time have made a difference every day in countless ways. From academic success to emotional support, and from operational excellence to teamwork, you showed what it truly means to care. I am very impressed. As we look ahead to the 25, 26 school year, we do so with excitement, possibility, and confidence in what we can accomplish together. And like I started with you at the beginning of the school year, when we opened our PD in the gymnasium, I led with the quote, "We all do better when we all do better." And we are better and stronger as we wrap up this school year, all because of you, and I just want to say, on behalf of myself as a new leader, I want to say thank you for all that you've done for the district this year. That's all.
Just have one quick question, do you think the electricity increase was due to incorrect estimates or equipment failure, or don't you know?
I don't know at this time, but we will, we are looking to it. I attribute it to very old infrastructure and equipment, but I have to do a deeper dive into that.
Sorry.
It's all right, Tony. Are we able to do like online forms where people can submit them from home, or does it have to be all paper printable?
No, we can do some, we're doing some online work. So one of the forms that I'm working on now is an online bowling form, they'll be able to do free and reduced lunch online.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so there's all kinds of things that-
So to save that way as well.
Correct.
My other part, my other question was, with the facilities we're talking about, does that include like a transportation look as well?
Yes, I forgot to talk about that. So the administrators and myself and Ashley, we just met with a transportation mapping company that comes in and looks at your data and your layout, and they, we are trying to decide now which one we're gonna go out with, because the practices of our transportation are very inefficient in how we rotate our buses, and with the time change of moving our school up to a district-wide time, we are gonna compact our routes.
Good.
And it's going to impact not only the efficiency of our transportation fleet and routes, but it also will help the financial side of it also. So we will have a decision made within the next month on what we're gonna recommend as an administrative team.
Perfect, thank you.
That's awesome.
Can I ask one question? With the delay of the solar panels, what is the delay, and do we know how delayed it is?
The delay was the thaw, and so they couldn't dig. They did the samples in the fall, and now on Friday, I will have my meeting on when they start, and I think they are waiting till school gets out, but we also had to wait to find out where we knew where the landmark for the Nexus Construction Headquarters is gonna go, to make sure we can get everything in behind Falls Elementary. So Friday, we will know the start date.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. Any other questions for Beth? All right, next to Policy Committee. I just want to go over a quick recap, Tony, I don't know if you wanna-
I didn't bring my notes with me.
Oh.
Recap, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I was just gonna do a general, so we met and just looked over, and we have some first readings of different policies. These are mostly ones that just needed different statutes corrected, errors in some small language, punctuation, things like that, but these are all ones that were gone over and recommended by the MSBA when they went through all of our policies. So these are our first, our start to bringing the policies to the meetings, and now I think we're gonna try to hopefully meet again here, hopefully next week if you guys are available, and continue to go through policies. So we have a lot of work to do, but it's, we're getting there, we're moving in the right direction, so. Tina, you do the Athletic Committee?
Yep, I don't have a huge update, but we have started meeting, we have a big agenda list with different things people had been bringing to our attention, things that we've talked about in the past that really didn't have an answer. One thing that we did make a decision on was that the Athletic and Activities Committee does recommend moving forward with a proposal for moving the Mighty Mustangs under community ed, so we are recommending that we move forward with that. And then some of the other stuff, we, I mean, there's a lot of stuff on there, from hockey to volleyball to policies. We are going to look at doing, once school gets out, because we know Beth and everybody is busy with the crunch right now, having a more in-depth meeting where we can actually, because some of the meetings are so quick, we're just talking about what we want to talk about, you know, but nothing's being resolved. So we are gonna have a longer meeting where we can make some bigger decisions on how we're gonna move forward with those.
Awesome, great, thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll move to the Consent Agenda, and on the Consent Agenda is the windscreen, that's the last item, 34. So if everybody's okay with that, do I have a motion for the Consent Agenda?
I'll do that.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, I have a motion by Rox and a second by Tina to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Any discussion?
I have one question on, I'm just gonna grab this quick. On the first readings that we have done, I guess as clerk, I just want to know, I saw some things like as far as like names that were listed wrong and stuff, what do we have to do like as we're approving this? Am I able to change it after the meeting?
Yes, so we're gonna move to a second reading, we're gonna go through them one more time, and then we will make those changes, they'll go to a second reading, then we'll go to a-
Okay, so we'll bring back the second time, you'll notice the change.
Yep.
Because I thought we weren't gonna use specific names, it was gonna be like-
It's gonna be generalized.
Right, but it's still, right now, it's listed as Tim Eversen and-
Oh, it's still-
Yeah, those have to be updated.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then just the dates I was curious about, and like the policy 216 had like, her 206 had two of them listed, so I just want to make sure we're cleaning them up before we go through them again.
Okay, I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Are you there?
Yes.
Do you approve the Consent Agenda?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. All right, we'll go under Action Items, Improving Systems and Structures to Create a Culture Where All Are Welcomed and Supported. So Resolution of Acceptance of Gifts. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Jess and second by Tina, all right. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district, whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or devise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools ISD 361 accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. United Way of Northeastern Minnesota, 24 hygiene kits for students to take home for use, Greater Twin Cities United Way Grant Career Academies Building Movement, $10,000, Elks Bowling League Pals Donation, $500, True Star Bronco Hall of Fame, $500, PCA Bronco Hall of Fame Fifth Grade Starbase Trip Relay Recess T-shirts, that's $1,500, $6,000, and $3,500. Box Tops FHS, $27.50, Mark and Amy Callaway Stuart Nordquist Field Donation, $1,000, Bronco Basketball Boosters Scoreboard, $8,590, Rainier Ret Club Boys Hockey Coach, $1,300, Boys Hockey Supplies, $350, Hockey Cheer, $175, Basketball Cheer, $175, Bronco Volleyball Boosters, Huddle, $100, and Scoreboard, $3,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Awesome. All right, opposed? All right, Whereupon the Resolution Was Declared Adopted. We'll move on to approving ISD 361 to assume management of the Mighty Mustang Wrestling Program under the oversight of community education. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, and motion by Jess and a second by Rox. Any discussion?
I think it falls perfectly within what we're doing with other programs, as you stated earlier, it just makes sense.
All right. All those in favor of assuming management of the Mighty Mustang Wrestling Program under the oversight of community education?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, approve the fiscal year 24, 25 revised budget?
I may.
All funds?
I just want to thank you all for that. We're now a lot of happy kids.
Yes, thank you guys for your dedication.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Approve the fiscal year 24, 25 revised budget, all funds, do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Tina, second by Jess. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor to approve the fiscal year 24, 25 revised budget, all funds?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, opposed. All right, motion carried. Approve the one-time funding REED Act Teacher Compensation Aid stipend payout of $32,021.28. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Rox and second by Tina.
Can I ask one question about it?
Sure.
How do you decide how that amount gets divvied out?
That is a really great question. So on your, underneath tonight, I added the MOU.
Yes.
And if you look under item number two, you can see the different courses, and they actually, a majority of them fall under the Letters Training, the 109 hours. So based on the hours is what their stipend will be.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Great question.
The, over a number of years of discussion, I see it was scheduled throughout 2022 to 2025, throughout a number of years of discussion, I have heard, with teachers, I have heard a lot of concern about the number of hours they felt they were volunteering for everything, and I am so pleased to find out there's finally some funding to give back to them, because they work hard to get the training they needed, and they changed the curriculum, they improved the way kids read through this training, and I'm very pleased.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the one-time funding REED Act Teacher Compensation Aid stipend payout of $32,021.28?
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, motion carries. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Tina, second by Jess. Any discussion?
643.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, awesome, thank you guys.